I don't know what to say. And I'm muted and everyone.
I don't have the other one.
See, Ellie Dillon chasing across us.
Also can't see.
Bernadette, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great.
One minute.
No.
That's what I'm saying.
I know.
They can.
Those are all.
Well, you know, a lot of your people swear. I mean, it a lot of sounds fair to me too.
I hope that's what it hurts.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
I mean. That was a little inappropriate.
Oh, I'm sure.
Oh, hey, well, the only guy sitting on a beach already palm tree. Not in the last time and all this is walking by and say, where? Where's my? Please rise in the village allegiance be led by Chief Mayshaw.
The village allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the public. This stands for a nation under God and the principle of the reading and blessing for all.
What I can only call first for the village of Boston Spa Board meetings. Bernadette joins us from Canada tonight, and so she will not do a rendition of "Oh, Canada", of course. Just kidding.
Okay, I do know what I think, but no.
I know about the first three lines. I think it goes downhill from there. Anyway, welcome to our board of board meeting of Village of Boston Spa used for me to say July 22nd, 2024, second of the month of July. We are going to not be having a public hearing that was previously advertised for parades as we are still in flux with some of the code. And was not going to be available in time even for discussion tonight. We will be publicizing it. When we get a chance to finish that this week. There is three weeks between meetings going on between this meeting and the first meeting in August, so we'll have plenty of time to get that finished up. And out the door for everybody to see for the public hearing that we will hopefully schedule later in this meeting. In the meantime, getting a motion that the minutes of the July 8th, 2024 meeting be approved.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Bernadette, discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chief Mayshaw, the Boston Spa Fire Department, Boston Spa Fire Department, I'm getting tongue tied today. Will be discussing with us in presentations apparatus repair issues. Among other things, I'm sure he has other stuff to talk to us about. Okay, just that. Make sure the red light is on on your microphone and you were good to go, chief.
There's no red light.
It's a little bit.
Okay. All right. Under our service contract we have with Vander Mullen Fire Apparatus, Dunlop Hills. Union Fire Company has started this year's truck inspections. And our 2009 engine that went down last week for annual testing and inspection came back with a list of of things that need repaired on it. And I quickly will go through some of them, but there's eight large diameter water ball valves that need replaced because they're leaking. The air tanks underneath the truck that control the brakes and the air operated valves are corroded to the point of needing replacement. Per NFPA requirements, the tires are 15 years old and they're required to be replaced at 15 years. So it needs all new tires, which is the most expensive thing. Tires alone coming in at $11,000 for new tires mounting, you know, the replacement of them. All total for that truck, the repair costs estimated at this point are $26,402, which is well above and beyond our entire budget year maintenance and repair for vehicles. In addition to that, the smaller engine, engine 14-2 went down. It was discovered that the transmission is shot on that. They went to do the pump test. The pump wouldn't pass because the pump is driven off the drive train from the transmission. So, and when we went to drive it back after that, it barely made it back to the firehouse. I do not have an estimate on the replacement cost for that, but my best guess is around $10,000 for that replacement. So we have some significant expenses to get apparatus restored to full service. The smaller engine is completely out of service at this point. I won't let them take it out of the firehouse until it's going to get repaired. Cannot be reliable enough for emergency response. The first truck, I will continue to keep it in service. It passed its pump test and its inspection, but these are recommended replacement things, all of which I concur with. So we're looking at about 36,000 in repairs for just those two apparatus.
So the way it kind of works here is this. We do have a amount to be placed in reserve, a reserve fund that we approve for fire trucks, et cetera. And what we will end up doing is we'll fund it out of any excess out of our fund balance for now. And when we go to the mode of figuring out what your plus or minus for the year was based on your budget. We will accordingly affect a reserve knowing that we've spent X number of dollars on emergency repairs. With respect to the first repair you mentioned, it is on the agenda tonight as an emergency repair. The second one, we will do an email around, once you have a figure to do an email approval by the board for emergency repair of transmission unless it's right funding our next meeting and we'll just invoke here if that's the case, but we want to get the, obviously our apparatus back where it's fit as possible in those situations. Does the board have any comments and thoughts beyond that?
I was just curious, the parts you need to replace, do you know what the lifespan on those parts was? Well, the truck's 15 years old. The majority of those have not been replaced to this point, so. So this potentially something that we need to program into the maintenance over a cycle is then maybe increase our maintenance budget. Yes, I would say so because, you know, this NFPA requirement on the tires at 15 years is relatively new. It was passed into the last time the codes were updated or the guidelines were updated. You know, if we want to maintain our apparatus in accordance with those guidelines, which we do, we'll have to figure out when, you know, every 15 years tire replacement. Like I said, we, we had, I think, Union had $20,000 budgeted for maintenance repairs for this year. Because one and two valves here, every time we go down, need some repairs, but like I said, there's eight of them for, for this time. You know, you get sand and dirt in the tank water when you're sucking off our water system. Or if we're drafting from a pond somewhere, you know, if the need be. You get that in there and it just eats the seals and balls up on those valves. That's a fairly routine replacement. That's why we put mainly why we have the maintenance repair costs in there. projected.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. Chief? I feel like sir. Thank you. Time for public comment on agenda items only. Three minutes per speaker. If you're on Zoom now, would be the time. Raise your hand if you do want to speak, but in the meantime, we'll start in room. Anybody like to speak in this public comment session? Liz with two fingers.
Liz Formos, 89 Hyde. I did have one question, just informational. How much does a new truck cost?
Depends on type of truck talking with.
One that needs repair, the 2009?
Mike, no, I will.
No.
We'll find out if.
I just, you know, is it time to look at a new truck or not?
Well, right now we have $3,150,000, I believe, of trucks, one on order, one that needs to be immediately repaired. The ladder truck at Eagle Matley. So it's kind of a wait and order priority scenario as well, but we're not going to take any apparatus off the road. It can be fixed in the meantime, and so that, that's kind of the way we look at that.
And my other question was, with this motion to give water to 40 Lee Street. Question I had, do others on that street have access to our water? Is, is this something that, you know, is, is somebody who didn't elect to take the water, you know, buy the water, working off the well and now wants, wants public water?
I, we didn't ask the question of why they did their, I'm sure, I think this is actually a house that was a new purchase, so new owner, and they assessed probably the well situation when they were in. Said we want it, so currently what we do is we do an individual agreement with them until we resolve the town Milton water district issues so that we can serve them. We put an escrow in for covering any amounts that they fall short on, not paying. And then when we do the water officially, that will get taken out of that individual agreement and any escrow will be agreed first to them because it'll be on Milton, through the collections and all that. But as for, as far as when somebody puts in a request, we do a letter through LaBella. We take $300 upfront for that letter. If they become the customer, we apply that $300 toward that escrow. And we let LaBella assess whether or not it is appropriate, some pressure and capacity to allow them on the system and also proximity to the infrastructure. They pass all those tests in this case.
Okay. Now, the last question is, will trustee Bernadette be allowed to vote?
Yes, it was pre, it was pre.
Where was it noticed?
It was noticed on the website and in the paper.
See, so.
Or I should say on Facebook and the newspaper at the earliest. I didn't see what the, what we did on the website, but that's where it was.
As long as it was in the newspaper.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else in the room? See nobody on Zoom, so going once, going twice. No takers? Can I get a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Briefly, see O'Reilly's Auto Parts application, swimming open stars day on August 10th. And we kind of waste her library contract listed. Does anybody want anything removed from that before I take a motion officially? Seeing nobody wanting to remove anything, can I get that motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Chris Bush, he is trustee Fundanza with the second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I keep apologizing. I'm an eye on that. I'm a little not used to the Zoom and voting.
Can I get a motion that the property located at 40 Lee Street in outside use or be granted permission to hook into the village's water system?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Raymond.
I'll second.
Chris Bush, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She's not opposing, she was an aye and motion carries.
I was an aye. That was just so weird.
This is the way we get it. Got to get a motion that identity treasurer Rebecca Little be added as an official signatory for the Adorant Trust Company accounts. Trustee.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fundanza on the second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I did say aye.
No, we, I got you now. And motion carries. Got to get a motion ratifying the prior emergency expenditure of $15,219 for well three B infrastructure repairs and $3,380 for labor related to the repairs to subsurface technologies.
I'll make the motion.
I'm going to give it to trustee Fundanza just for delaying purposes.
Yeah.
And you'll get the second discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She, she was out. Yeah. Motion carries.
She just hit thumbs up.
We drowned her out by saying I'd say that. Can I get a motion ratifying the prior emergency authorization of the expenditure of $5,800 to stand codes on heating and cooling LLC for the library air conditioning unit replacement?
I'll make the motion.
Chris, trustee Fundanza on the second discussion. This is, you can hear one of the units going. There are two units in the building, one of which is in imminent need of replacement. And the other one needs some refrigerate refrigerant as well. Believe that they'll be doing this midweek to get everything back on the system. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, I think. No, motion carries. I get a motion to name the village of Boston Spa agency related to proposal law number four, 2024 parades.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Fundanza. Yeah, and trustee Raymond on the second in this case, discussion. Anything else we need to do beyond just accepting this? Do you have anything you want, Rev?
No, you just need to set the whole hearing.
Yep. Roll call or no on this? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to, well, we're going to, hold on, we go back here. Yeah, okay. Can I get a motion setting a public hearing related to proposal law number four, 2024 parade at the Village of Boston Spa Board of Trustees meeting on August 12th, 2024 at 7:01 PM?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Chris Bush, trustee Fundanza on the second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, no, Steve, Sean. Motion carries.
Ladies first.
I saw you, Sean. I appreciate it. I did.
We, we discussed by an email, there's no need for the motion, next motion, because it can be handled administratively to be technically DPW. We did get some details on how this has happened in the past, and we'll make sure DPW is actually managing the placement of the planters. Because it sounds like a volunteer may have done it last year unbeknownst to us, and that should not be happening. But we will make sure we facilitate the planters going into the areas. We did alert Sean O'Brien of the one near O'Brien's pharmacy. And I did clarify with Carl earlier that he bears no liability or responsibility with respect to our placement of a planter in front of his business situation. So I think we're all good on that with no need for this motion. Got to get a motion though to approve emergency repairs by Vander Mullen Fire Apparatus, a truck 14-3, Union Fire Company number two for an amount estimated at $26,402.40.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fundanza.
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, well done. Opposed? Motion carries. Here's announcements. Fair starts tomorrow. Make sure you get up there and enjoy yourself. As I posted today on Facebook. They did work on getting a temporary cell tower located for Verizon customers because that was the service that had the worst go of it last year. Verizon stepped up to put it, what they call a cult on the property. They sell on light truck and they will be putting a permanent tower there soon. And whenever you post something like this, you learn about all the world's problems with cell service and some of which is in the village, some of which is not, but we are investigating the idea because I actually had a call today with USG about the water tower repairs. And their first move is to get the cell carriers in tandem to get off the tower or to get them to participate in a corral at the top of it or both on their dime. And one of the things that we kind of commented is maybe this is a chance for Verizon, especially because of what I understand, their equipment is of a smaller variety on top of John Street Tower. Perhaps they will reassess what equipment they have on their tower rather than have the opportunity to perhaps get a better coverage scenario up there. And if it's a crowd, go higher up on the tower so that the spread or reach is better in those situations. So long story short, I'm hoping that we have none of the problems we had last year with the Verizon service locally, that 911 calls will be readily available. And data services for those that rely on them will as well. I do know that slick fiber is doing installs. Speaking of data and internet stuff in the village, so I got mine actually installed today after a couple of false starts because they had some infrastructure issues that they cleared up. So we do have fiber service starting to flow out into the village, which is early for those that wanted Verizon fires for the longest time. Verizon decided not to come up this way. So little by little, we're kind of joining 2024 here with the rest of the cities and, you know, smaller towns out there and everything else that have access to fibers. So it's a much needed relief for a lot of people. Other than that, I think we want to thank everybody that came out for the opening of the 78 Thompson Street Police Department building. Nice crowd there for, and thanks to Senator Cavisco and Assemblywoman Walsh's offices for helping us get that kicked off. And Boston Spa Business Professional Association for doing the ribbon cutting at that event. I think the reactions, a lot of people as they went through was especially for those that had seen 30 Bath Street from the inside, it was more or less a big wow compared to what they were dealing with. And so Chief Bush seemed happy, which I know is tough to tell usually with Chief Bush, but I think I saw a smile on his face at a certain point. Don't quote me. And pickleball and basketball, we are priming up to get those courts done and open in early August. Stay tuned for a date on that as well. We'll do a dedication ceremony and opening day there as well. So be ready for that. Not to steal your, your thunder there, Sean, on what's going to be your part of your report, I'm guessing from Jeff going up here. No treasurer's report this week. We've had some much deserved vacations in the treasurer's office. As Rebecca was out for a couple of weeks and Melissa is out as well right now. So getting geared up for water and sewer payments after doing tax payments in the month of June throughout the month and, you know, again, much deserved because of all the stuff that comes at us. Jennifer worked on the frontline on that as well. So appreciate everything she does to make that happen as well. Leaving some reports, let's start with Sean. Mine is the pickleball basketball, I guess.
So that's been pretty busy. He was on vacation, but he got, he sent something to me pretty quickly here. Just briefly. Contractor for subsurface technologies for the well rehab. They, they wrapped that up. He, he did mention to me also that the other, there may be another well in a pump that might need replacement as well coming up. And then repaired storm drainage drainage pipe on lower Boston Ave. Clean some drainage pipes on East North Street. Striped the police parking lot, public box and some of the street parking. Three people attended water training classes also to keep up with their education on that. And to do list is to continue to support subsurface tech for the well rehab, install no parking signs in the bus loop to her. County Fair Week, repair abandoned water service leak Brown Street near East North Street. Patch pave Boston Ave storm repair. Install, actually install the basketball hoops. And dry well drainage structure on Frederick Lane needs to be installed. And continue new street sign installations and continue with the EPA blood report. On a concerning note, we lost another employee at DPW. So we're down to three people. It's going to make it very difficult to try to stay on schedule. They're in the process. I know Jen has gotten some resumes and they're in the process of reviewing, but it's hard to going to stay on track to just, just three people and
All seven people.
Yeah, but we're down to three laborers, so it's it's going to make it tough. So I just ask people to bear with them. And hopefully we can get some hires very quickly.
Definitely working on that for sure. And it's going to be aided by the improvement in the bottom line pay that we have in the memorandum of intent between the parties and the union and us. And we're also finalizing the contract, but I was already paying out what we promised on a higher rate. All right.
The friends of the library received a $50,000 check from the community foundation Stewart Date's family from a grant that they submitted to support the capital campaign. They're also very excited. The library is very excited about hoopla and want to encourage residents to get involved. And if you have a library card, you can download movies, anything you want on any streaming device. So if you don't have a library card, check in and get one. Enjoy hoopla. The Kelly Park Creekside Playground repairs are complete and we just need to do some repainting, which will be done in cooler, cooler temperatures, right? It was pretty hot for everyone a few weekends ago and they want to thank Keith Champagne for organizing the, the work day and pretty much he did a lot of work beforehand. Family Fun Day is looking for more vendors, so if you know anyone who wants to take part, pass the word. And congratulations to the PD and their new space.
Also, you mentioned Stewart's. If I'm not speaking out of school, if I bring up the fact that we got a little note today that said they were going to help us out with 1,200 bottles of water, I think it is for Family Fun Day. So Stewart's such a big contributor toward the community in so many places, including Boston Spa. So thank you to them. Bernadette?
All right. First off, thank you for everyone's graciousness for letting me be in Canada and not letting it really stop us. It's my great uncle's 102nd birthday, so I'm very pleased to be up here and still participate. So let me start with the BSVPA. They wanted to share that they're very proud to help us with their ribbon cutting for the police station. But more importantly, we're very thankful for their involvement. Markets again are on Thursday, four to seven, and then Saturday, nine to 1:00 PM. Concerts in the park this Thursday is six to eight and it's Tom's band. And then next week, speaking of Stewart's, is the ice cream social. So I hope everybody's getting their scooping arms ready for that. Hopefully the ice cream will be out a little earlier, so it won't be rock hard. And also next Friday is the movie in the park. It'll be Honey, I Shrunk the Kids, and that's the last movie of the season. Since Ben is not able to join us, I have an update from Arts Committee. Plain Air, they're having a Plain Air event on July 28th, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And people can sign up at the Facebook page. I can't talk. I'm sorry, guys. Sounds of Summer Concert, July 20th as well, six to 7:30 PM at Brookside Museum. And the Committee on Arts will be involved with the BSVPA in a number of different ways with tie dye projects at both the movie in the park and also the farmer's market on August 3rd. And then Family Fun Day, they're going to also participate as well and have a craft for kids and they're looking forward to that. And then again, a Sounds of Summer Concert will be on August 25th from six to 7:30 PM in Brookside Museum. That's all I got.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, old business parking code, next steps. I think this is probably best for you, Madam.
Thank you. At this point, the parking code has been sent to the Department of State and we're waiting here when it gets filed. The next step is actually to create the schedules. I was in touch with Chief Bush and Superintendent Gores last week. Well, I emailed them last week before. It's been a rare month. And we have kind of a basis of like where there's no parking, where there's handicap parking inventory. So I've asked them to go out and make sure that we have all the inventory so they can create the schedules. Once the schedules of where things are is created, then that comes to the board for a resolution for the board to review and make sure that that's, you know, where everything is. And then those schedules will be kept in the office, in the village clerk's office. Once that's in place, then we can go to back to court and the police can start putting traffic tickets on and we'll go to court and start enforcing that.
And as I told Chief Bush, it's probably time to start looking for a parking enforcement officer. So by the time that they're actually ready to be hired, they'll be coinciding time wise with everything being ready to go and issuing tickets being a lot at that point in time. They'll look at it as a revenue maker per se, but obviously it's an antillar benefit of the situation and. at it as a revenue maker per se, but obviously it's an ancillary benefit of the situation and pays for the salary or the pay of that position. So that's why we don't currently have one. Obviously there will be no need for it right now without a real parking code to administer. And so we will be obviously back in full strength with respect to that very soon. I'm going to flip on new business just to stay on the topic of parking first. And we've been getting a lot of requests over the last couple of years about, you know, we did some things as a village back in around 2018, 2019 range, I think it was, with respect to downtown central business district parking. And we've noticed certain things that still need improvement along the way. So I'm going to be gathering some stakeholders to sort of give some input about the inventory of the type of parking we have. Is it time for parking meters to be considered for certain spaces? Not all of them or not all lots or anything like that, but for people that want to park for greater than two hours because maybe they need a spa treatment and something else going on where two hours isn't the right amount of time. But obviously we want a little bit of fluidity in our parking spaces to be occurring. Are we ready for EV chargers in parking lots or parking spaces? I did speak with Scott Gressons at National Grid in Kim, Ireland on Tuesday last week, and they are willing to help us do the assessment of whether or not our grid system is ready for it and if not, what they can do to assist us with that. So that's a question because obviously when you put a charger in, usually you put a priority for electric cars to be in those spaces for charging purposes. So that could affect inventory of spaces. We also have caught a glitch in the system where downtown business district extends to almost where railings basically in fact pass it, yet there's no on or off street parking requirements for downtown business district, commercial businesses. And so they can rely on on-street parking, except for the fact that there's no on-street parking really on Route 50 that far. And so what does that mean? How does that work? And maybe we need to reassess that aspect of the overall parking code here and what to do with it ultimately. And so getting input from stakeholders will be important too. So just announcing preliminarily here, the intent and why, and I can see business owners, property owners, including some property owners that are, let's say on the fringe just outside the downtown business district, because they get affected by businesses that have parking going on on-street and see what their thoughts are about how it's working or not working and what we can do. So a lot of questions. Speckled Pig's success, I think, probably pulled back the current little bit on some of the interesting ancillary problems you can have with no requirements in that district. Their success is great, but we also need to learn what we need to do moving forward as well, because we have a few more of those successful businesses. Where does anybody park at that point in time? So we really have to take a step back and look at that. So that it will be after this inventory is scheduled. This is not going to be making the first publication of the schedule. Want to get our parking assessment as it stands done for administration of tickets and execution of those. And then later on, we can go back and change the schedule thanks to the way that the law is laid out. Okay, I will give Bernadette the honor on Saratoga Springs Community Development Block Grant Program. Had a great lunch with Mayor Stafford of Saratoga Springs and a couple others from Saratoga and taking away Bernadette.
Yes, as the mayor said, we met with Mayor John Stafford, as well as Beige Bearman, who's the head of Sitting Planning Department, and then Katie Tiedemann, who is one of our residents, but she works for the city in their community development, as a community development planner. They brought up to us, they discussed with us this idea of going in as a whole community, as a county, to opt in to pursue the federal community development block grants as a county as a whole. Right now, Saratoga Springs is eligible for about $350,000, but they, because our population in the county has grown so much, we are eligible for even more money as a whole community. If we opt in and we get municipalities to equal roughly, to at least meet that 200,000 person like threshold, we'd be able to go after $1.5 million. That could be worked on different projects throughout the county. Right now, they're not asking for any particular project ideas from us, but they're asking us to consider if the Village of Boston Spa would like to opt in. What that means is, you know, we wouldn't necessarily be able to go for state housing money, but currently the village has not gone after housing money as long as I am aware. So this would be a real opportunity for us to be able to have access to federal funds that we normally wouldn't have. And while we're not able to, we don't have to provide a particular project right now, it could be used for things like improving our buildings, improving public facilities, whether it be water and sewer facilities, fire protection facilities, even things like our parks, potentially our, our pool, our village pool could be funded by community development block grants funding. So I just wanted to pepper it to you guys right now, get it on your minds. I would like us to consider as a board to opt in. If, like I said, if we have enough of the county opting in, we can, I think it was three years, Frank, you'll have to correct me, we would be opted in and we'd be able to submit sort of projects. The Katie Tiedemann would actually be administering this for the whole county. She would, because she already has that experience and she would be doing it for Saratoga Springs anyway. It'd be a great way to, you know, use shared services. She would do any filing paperwork, you know, annual reports, quarterly reports on our behalf. So we don't have to put that burden on our own staff, administrative staff in our village office. So just wanted to introduce the idea to you guys and then also, you know, hopefully talk about it more in the future. I don't, Frank, you'll have to correct me, when did she say we needed to opt in?
A few, two or three months from now was the goal date. It's somewhere October at the worst. So stay tuned, but like you said, it's good to get it on the radar here. And to thank Saratoga Springs for considering the entire county, because they get, they lose some of their own access per se, although they will remain the administrators of the program. You know, obviously they're going to have to widen out the net of who gets that money from there. So there are benefits from the wider pool of money that could be available, but some interesting given tape for them. And they seem very willing to do that in this situation. We appreciate them meeting with us to explain mainly the bosses of doing this situation. So any thoughts, any comments beyond that? Thank you very much.
And if you guys, I'm sorry, Frank, just if you guys do have specific questions, let me know and I can run them past Katie to get some answers if you need them. All right.
Thank you very much. Public comment on any issue? Again, if you're on Zoom, this would be a good time to raise your hand. Three minutes per speaker on this. Again, on any issue, anybody in the house? I see a full hand this time from Liz. Let's go ahead.
Liz Cormos, 89. Hi. A couple of questions. Your committee on looking at parking, is that going to be a board appointed committee such that every board member gets to pick, you know, people? Because I think that's important. It's a very important topic. You need to include a wide variety of people who were inspired by the parking after some businesses. And second thing is on this grant, I think you need to take a close look at it. Three years ago, we looked at it and decided it wasn't in our favor. The majority of the county agreed with us. They didn't go for it. So, you know, there's pluses and minuses. I think you need to take a close look at that. And then lastly, I'm questioning whether the review of the Tapsimack grant has happened or has been scheduled. As of the end of last meeting, I was told Bernadette indicated that I could attend the review. Unfortunately, after the meeting, she told me that.
You were never invited. You were never invited.
Let's let her finish.
This is for village staff.
Let's let her finish. She's almost at her.
I, you agreed in the meeting at 38, 20, and then disagreed. And I spent a lot of hours on that grant. I've written, there's been two applications. No, we have not gotten it. But I would really like to hear from reviewers exactly what is the positives and the negatives of the grant and what could be done in the future. Thank you.
Did you get your feedback, the first miss on Tapsimack grant? Did you do a feedback session with them?
No, I did not.
Okay, just checking, because we didn't have any sign of it either. We wanted to sure.
No, unfortunately, I did not know that this was reviewed.
Okay. Anybody else in the room? Anna.
Anna Stankel, 32 Pet Street. I wanted to follow up on Mary's comment about the park work. First off, Keith Champagne is a rock star. The guy had every piece of board that we had planned on replacing cut. We learned that there's top bevel, side bevel, bottom bevel. Okay, we had all kinds of bevels going on. It was very hot and very sticky, but we, we had a small group, but we got a lot accomplished. There is more work to do. I will say that for those that had some concerns about our little gingerbread people causing nail harm to others, I will say that these press boards were put in 2008 and they are just starting to come off. So I'm pretty sure that the poly gingerbread wooden people will stay on there for quite some time without any concern. Those that did have concern should have been over there looking on it because there were nails and screws all over the place that could have caused a lot of harm to the children, the families that were there. Oh, we did not get the painting done, as Mary said. So that will either be maybe a fall or a spring project. We also did not get the grassy area in there cleaned out and replanted. It was just too darn hot. So that also was something we would need to look forward to, maybe in the spring or fall, whatever. I know, I understand that there is like $2,500 of the fans money that they are trying to dissolve their 501(c)(3) and it's kind of a hard thing to do. I would like to suggest to the board that they think about purchasing new mulch in the spring or that money if it's done by then, because the mulch, it's, it's just, it's horrible over there. I mean, I don't think the mulch has been there. I think that mulch has been there since 2008. I do not believe it has ever been, anything has ever been added. So it was a really good day. Like I said, we didn't have a lot of people show up, but the people that were there were, most of them were very skilled and able to get things done. So the, the big safety issues with the kids hanging and stuff, that's all been repaired. The swings, the two swings were put up. We did a lot. Carmen, Joy and Isabella came down and threw some hot dogs on for us to help with lunch. And that's all I got. I will also say thank you. I don't know who was involved, but our homeless people are not living in the park anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Anybody else in the room? Gina?
Gina Morosi, 100 Glory Lane. Family Fun Day is, the planning is well underway. And while Mary said that we're looking for vendors, we've got a ton of vendors, a bunch of new people. Everybody wants to be a part of this. So we will keep offering spots until we run out. And then we might have to do a cutoff or we're going to have to think about extending this. I don't know. We'll have to see what happens. But the band's in place to refer, so let me back up. 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM are going to be quiet hours for sensory sensitive children. 12 to 5 will be the regular Family Fun Day events with all the noise. And then 6 o'clock, the refrigerators will perform at the Iron Spring Park. I just wanted, I want to tell you, you know, we were concerned about contributions this year. And not only is everybody stepping up, we've got new people that are stepping up and contributing to this event. So we're really pleased with the amount of support we're getting from the community. The BSBPA is supporting us with a musician in the park in Waswell Park. It's just, it's coming together. It's going to be great and we're very excited. And again, it's Sunday, August 18th, and we hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sisson. Anybody else?
Got a little time rally, right? Right out on 16th, we'll work out. I just want to say, I was, I was not able to participate in the rebuild down there. It was a choice that I had a tough time making. It was either to work on that or go on an eight day cruise down in Bahamas. I went on the cruise. I'm sorry. I had a good time. But I want to thank everybody that got involved, not just Pete, because Pete and I are very good friends and I know what that man is like. He is a machine. And when I heard he was going to be in charge of the construction end of it, it's like, okay, well, that's done. He's just amazing. All the others that put their time into that, it's, it's much needed. It's something that we really need to get on the schedule as part of the normal parks and recreation for this, this village. It's the only playground in the village. It's the only big space that we have. We, we really need to look at it more equitably. Glad to see the pickleball courts and basketball courts are finally going in there. And, you know, the, the fun that people can have down there is just, just beginning to, you know, we're just beginning to scratch the surface. I also want to thank, and I don't know her name, it was mentioned at the opening of the police department, the person that wrote the grant for the new tech equipment.
Scott Street?
Was it? Oh, it was Scott Street? Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Like I said, I couldn't remember who it was. I want to thank that person for being successful in giving that grant because it is so needed. Having been in that building for literally 40 years myself and seeing what they've done with it to convert it over into a different emergency services use, I was amazed. And they just have so much room to work now. And yeah, my office is a holding cell, but that's okay. And they did a great job. The DPW did a great job. And Sean, if you could just get that message to them that, you know, they, they really did what was needed to make that building function the way it should as a police department. Lastly is a question, well, not lastly, a question very quickly. Does the village have a quiet time ordinance of any kind where you can't be running a drill press at 3:00 in the morning, or you can't be drilling a well somewhere at 2:00?
There, there are no exorces. Yes, in the code, yes.
Reason I ask is for the last year at least, the county waste comes in at 4:30 in the morning and starts emptying dumpsters throughout the village. And you're bang, 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 bang. And I have one near my house, but I can't imagine when they get going down through downtown, how loud that must be for people that are close. And it really needs, I don't know how it's enforced. I don't know any of that. So if we could look into that, I'd appreciate that. And also wanted to bring to your attention the plot where the cleaners were up on that.
Yes.
Okay. I noticed they have a boom that goes all the way down through there that's supposed to keep water back. There's one section of that where there's been water coming out of that for quite a while. I don't know if they got a broken pipe in there or something. Just, just a note, I realize it's county property now or whatever.
I'll, I'll get you up on this week because I have to reach out to EEC, just get an update on where we are with things. The work I think is either done or near done. I just want to see what the next steps are. We, we get a lot of calls on interest in that property, I'll be honest with you. And so I'll ask them if they're aware of that and if.
Yeah, because there's water coming out of there from a broken pipe or something. You're wasting a lot of gold water.
Yeah, oh, I get, I agree with you. So we'll see what we got over there. So thank you. Anybody else in the room? Ellie?
Ellie Dillon, 116 Malta Ave. Just a quick curiosity question. Are there any plans to restore the old police station?
One of the ideas out there, Ellie, just to be transparent and earnest with you on this, is perhaps to do an approach of a sale leaseback where we have somebody else do the work to take that first floor and make it into a real court space and meeting space as well. to take that first floor and make it into a real court space and meeting space as well. Because one thing we have a lack of in the community is true meeting spaces. And obviously we have to share, you know, what night, court night would be versus, you know, a meeting or committee meetings, whatever. But an approach like that might be something that is viable, also seeing what the county's future is. If there's possibility, we have the building with respect to the county, if they ever made a move and I talked.
They don't, who owns that? Don't we own that building?
Thirty Bass Street, currently we own it.
Yeah.
The thought is that there may be other places for court eventually, be it a county building or something like that. And so we kind of just are taking a big look at how to manage it for the future in a cost sensitive way. The good news is when you look at it, if we were to rebuild a, well, if we rebuilt a police and court building or relocated it and built something somewhere else, it probably would have cost about two million dollars, give or take, to do it. And we are lucky here that basically it was four sixty is what we'll take a loan out for, for the seventy Thompson Street site. And we suggested about sixty five thousand dollars for the renovations, including DPW overtime. But they mainly used the during the week hours. So I think we fell far short.
Is it vacant right now?
It is the court still. Thirty Bass Street is the court still.
There's still.
Yes, so the idea.
It's still being preserved. I don't want to shake them down. That's my goal.
No, the idea is to try to give this building over to somebody that's going to be able to renovate and manage it, but still possibly keep a function of court in there in a much more dignified manner than it is currently. For instance, taking the chambers and judges' clerks area, maybe some conferences, moving those where the police used to be, to the backside of that building and opening up that courtroom area downstairs. Now, that takes a lot of work and money ultimately, but we, we are in a good position because police didn't cost us a million plus dollars to do. So those are the thoughts right now. And again, the county's moves will obviously inform us a little bit what the best calls are, but they have no idea still what the future holds for them.
I was just curious.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks. Glad to do that. Anybody else? The bell tower, we have to go though because that thing is ready to come down, unfortunately. That's a danger. Anybody else? Nobody on Zoom? Oh, last, last minute call here. Chris View, come on down.
All right, so Chris View, six Cali Drive. A few things I just wanted to share with just some very good positive things seen going on in the village. Obviously, the opening of the new police department was quite impressive. Having tried to join the police department up in Plattsburgh to see again our own little station here, new station, more impressive than what they had up there for a department for a much larger municipality. It's quite impressive, quite a feat. They remind me of a few things though as well. We recently were up in our old stomping grounds up there. And unfortunately, they have a bit of a problem being so close to the Canadian border and always having that sort of traffic way for drugs coming across the border. There's a pretty bad meth problem going on right up in Plattsburgh. And you can usually see it in the local communities. It's sad to see, you know, streets that normally I would have considered safe for my older two children to, you know, easily roam and then walk the way they need to go. If I were still living up there, I'd be concerned. Even my teenagers now. So again, it always makes me thankful for this village, the, those beyond just the police department. I think what we have here, and again, that village of friends rings really true. For those of you who know our family, you know, our one son is a very convincing young man. He can talk you into just about anything. And he recently has been enjoying the summer swim program up in the, the pool there and just happened to convince somebody who had extra fishing poles that, hey, you love to fish? I'm going to bring you a fishing pole. Got permission from me and introduced me to him and everything else. I think what makes the village so special and where you can just, you know, drop your son off at the public pool and feel comfortable. And here he is talking to people at a fishing rouse, is again, all the great programs that we have that we incorporate in this village. Whether it's Family Fun Day, whether it's just the community volunteerism with redoing Kelly Park. You know, all these little events and everything, you know, we're talking about the gingerbread men. Again, having that awareness for our children as well, making sure that our children are safe in this community. Again, it just, you know, this discussion I had with my wife recently, where would we ever consider moving back to Plattsburgh? You know, property is relatively cheap up there. I could easily get a promotion if I decide to relocate. And again, electricity is very cheap up there. No, no, I would never, I would not leave this village.
She shook her head in the back. I mean.
With that being said though, I'd like to see what I can contribute back to the village with ideas. When I lived up in Plattsburgh, one thing the DPW did up there is they split apart. They grew beyond their bridges, they split apart, and then they had a separate water and sewer department. One thing they did is they just didn't have the staff. They split from the DPW. They didn't have the staff to man water and sewer. So a solution, certainly a solution they came up with was every summer they would employ college kids. For four years a max you could do, and it was a chance for college kids to learn if they wanted to get into the trades, they wanted to work for the DPW. Just a suggestion for this village. We have a wonderful summer youth program and this village has really been hiring the majority of our youth this year. It's been phenomenal. So I'm just thinking forward, maybe that might be an idea for the DPW.
It's actually something we began exploring this year, but a little late in the process, but something we might be attacking next year with back full strength, their normal staffing as well. So we've seen no benefit from it to a certain degree and we don't see why we're here. But again, it has to be done right and making sure we have the people ready to get the toodle-ooch on what to do and oversight and all that stuff. So there's a balance to it, but it's definitely something we're interested in pursuing at some point.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Anybody else on Zoom? Seeing neither. Other business included, but unlimited to board response, public comment. Pretty, pretty land of public comment session here in a good way tonight, so. Up here.
All right, I'll, I'll change it now. Go. No, I actually just want to give people an update from the last meeting. I know it was brought up about the traffic signal out at Front Street.
Other ones that haven't been changed?
I actually attended a meeting, field meeting with National Grid and DOT and some of the other service providers. And hopefully in the next month, they're going to put the taller poles that are needed there so we can move forward with.
Because it literally was a year ago almost. It was supposed to be done.
It's funny, I mean, just, don't you email the right person?
You got to find the right person though. That's the challenge. Mary, anything on yours? Burnet, anything on yours?
No, thanks.
Well, having heard nothing and not needing an executive session, can I get a motion that vouchers be on it and meeting be adjourned at seven fifty five PM? Can I get the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Hold on a second, anybody?
I'll second.
Trustee, ready, made a discussion, all in favor? A motion carries. We will see you in three weeks, everybody. Enjoy the fair.